Good afternoon, everybody. City of Lamarck, City Council Special Meeting of June the 11th, 2021. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas, will conduct a special meeting on Friday, June 11th, 2021, beginning at 4:00 PM in the council chambers at 11:09B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via Zoom teleconference hosted through Zoom for the purpose of considering the following agenda. This meeting has been called order. Robin, would you give us a roll call, please?
Mayor, what's up?
Present.
House Mayor and District State.
Present.
House Mayor and District State. Present.
Thank you, Robin. Item three, citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public, what we heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council on a specific agenda item, limited to three minutes. Should give the mayor your name and the item you wish to speak about. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal tax will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you are with us via Zoom or on your telephone, press star six to mute or unmute if you are participating, if attending via Zoom or smartphone or tablet or computer, or stand if attending in person, and the mayor will call you, will call on you in your turn. Item four, excuse me, item three. Are there any persons that are wishing to speak at this time? Any persons via Zoom or teleconference wishing to speak at this time? Any persons outside of our commissioners in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to item four. Four, oh, business, four A. Discussion, possible action regarding reconsidering and approving the Galveston County Health District revised interlocal agreement. This item was denied at the council meeting held on June the 1st, 2021, with the caveat that the Gauv- that Galveston County could speak to city council on the proposed changes. Today, from Commissioner's Court, we have Commissioner Holmes, Precinct 3, I believe. Commissioner Juisty, Precinct 2. And so, we also have from Judge Henry's office Tyler Drummond and Jed Webb. And so, at this time, we'll allow Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Juisty to make any comments that they would like to make to this council. Commissioner Holmes, seniority.
Yeah, but, but, Mayor, I would appreciate that. Let me first of all, thank you, you and council for taking this item up again. And I defer to our experts on the subject, Jed and Tyler, to for any further comments from the, from the Galveston County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Juisty.
Same thing. Thank you, guys, for allowing this meeting, except for not saying to present it to you. And just can't thank you enough. Again, we're going to defer to these two fellows, but it is something that really needs to happen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Guys and gals, I'm sorry.
Mr. Webb, are you going first?
Yes, sir.
Would you state your name and your position with Judge Henry's office?
Absolutely. Jed Webb, Galveston County, actually rep- um, am the Director of Government Relations for the entire Commissioner's Court. Thank you, council members and, and mayor for allowing us to be here and holding this special meeting. Apologies for a little bit of traffic. So, we have, we do that in Texas. Appreciate y'all coming and having this discussion. So, a little bit of background. The state of Texas requires municipalities or counties to provide 10 essential health functions. And 50 years ago, Galveston County and our municipalities came together and created a Galveston County Health District. There we go. So, the all didn't have to set up your own health districts. And so, all the municipalities. Commissioner's Court, for decades, has funded the Health District and been the primary funder, the sole funder, actually, of this. There's some additional services that the Health District partners with some of those cities, but the line item is for the health, for the county to spend that money. And the help, with this past year, we've really seen the benefit of that. Commissioner's Court has seen the benefit of that. The judge has as well. We want to continue to do that. Past year, we've learned a lot of different things, importance of public health. I'd like to note that many of your residents are, are users. Some of the highest percentage of your residents are, are those users, those in Texas City as well. And we see that benefit, especially at the mid-county annex with coastal health and wellness and the Health District. So, as we stand today, all cities in Galveston County have unanimously approved this interlocal. Every 10 years, we're supposed to come back and have this discussion with the cities to say, okay, how can we review, review it and improve it? The last time we did it was 2002, so we're only a few, few years late than our 10 years. But, as they say, better late than never. So, the Commissioner's Court and the judge are very supportive of it. They want to continue to do that. Like I said, the past year, we've seen some, some improvements that need to take place. And so, we've asked for this updated interlocal that's before you today. One, to save, continue to save y'all millions of dollars so y'all can set up your own Health District. And two, provide better services for your residents. Unfortunately, y'all weren't able to give the information at your last meeting. We were able to work with every other city and to communicate to them the benefits and what was going on. And our surety that qualified individuals will be on the board to make sure that they're healthcare professionals, community experts, so they can provide those, that expertise and that oversight to the Health District. After multiple contacts to y'all, to your city and to your city staff, we were unable to get answers, which is unfortunate. We, we sent letters, emails, phone calls, and just weren't able to connect, except we finally got an answer back from y'all 19 minutes before y'all met, or at least the first return phone call, which is unfortunate. As we've gone through this process with all the cities, we've had good, good dialogue, productive dialogue. One of the things that we heard back from the initial request interlocal we sent y'all was that they want, many cities wanted to make sure that there was a physician on the board. So, we went back, we changed that, and we sent the updated, the revised interlocal of all the cities, just to make sure that there's always that expertise on that board. And so, we've done that. So, we would hope and want to partner with y'all to make sure that you, your residents and on our residents can, can benefit from that, from the Health District and the service provided. And so, that's why we're here today. It would be a shame, that, that couldn't happen. But, we, hopefully, moving forward, we can have more productive conversation as we deal with a litany of, of different things, have a more productive conversation. So, I know, Mayor, you had a conversation, met with, with the judge, and hopefully that'll be more productive. And we're, we're looking forward to meeting with y'all as we move forward on a number of different issues with the county and city. So, but we, we tried our best and will continue to try our best to reach out and to have that productive conversation. And it's unfortunate that that wasn't able to be communicated to y'all effectively. Questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Drummond, would you like to?
Yes, if I may.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me here today. Tyler Drummond, Chief of Staff, County Judge Mark Henry. Again, apologies for being here late and tying y'all up this afternoon. Just want to touch on some points here. I think there's a common understanding amongst the Galveston County Commissioner's Court and a lot of our communities, if not all, is that public health works best as a community with all 13 cities, with the county as a whole partnering towards achieving whatever those public health goals may be. And since 1971, when the Galveston County Health District was created between all municipalities and the county at the time, the county through the Health District has achieved that purpose. And this past year has been the, the greatest test of all over the past, you know, 100-plus years, public health, especially here locally. And I think we're proud to say on how our community as a whole did, individually by the cities, as well as the county, you know, becoming a leader early on during the pandemic and through the pandemic on having some of the, the highest testing numbers in the nation. I remember reading an Associated Press report back in April, May of last year that, you know, I think the headline said, "One small Texas Gulf Coast County is testing, trying to test its way through coronavirus." And at the time, what we knew and what we didn't know was the best way to try to combat the virus was testing, identification of positive cases in isolation, right? Among other steps where social distancing and other CDC recommended best practices and guidelines. And once the vaccines came out, we saw how slow that happened on the national and state level, where vaccines were coming in in limited quantity, and we had tens of well over 100,000 residents wanting to get vaccinated. And what we were able to do and achieve by partnering with UTMB and working with the Health District and the county kind of helped pushing that along was we became, at one point, one of the highest vaccinated counties in the state of Texas. So, there's a lot to be proud of. And we've done that as a community, all the cities involved, the county, the Health District, UTMB, together. And what we've learned through this process is the need to update the way the Galveston County Health District has been kind of governed. Traditionally, the interlocal agreement is updated every decade. Hasn't been updated since, I think, 2001 or 2002. And so, we're looking to make some of those changes. And what we've recognized is, you know, we have a 13-member board currently. And it's tough for that board to currently get a quorum. Usually, they have just barely about seven members are able to participate, because this is a volunteer position. Nobody's being compensated to sit on this board. And over the years, the way it's been built is having different individuals within the community of different areas of expertise. A dentist, we have a podiatrist, we have a few citizen members on there, business owners, nurses, a pharmacist. And what we have discovered and had recommended through the county and consultation with Dr. Kaiser, the current public health authority and the current interim executive director of the district, is having a smaller, more qualified board on the United Board of Health may help function in the continual leadership and vision of the organization. So, what we proposed for this interlocal agreement is to go to a five-member board. And a five-member board, which would represent, within the interlocal, we updated to have one physician. What we're looking at, most likely, two doctors, a nurse, a pharmacist, and then a member of the public, who would be, you know, either a public citizen who utilizes the Health District services or traditionally what they've had is a business owner, because one of the biggest functions that the Health District provides is restaurant inspections. And, you know, that in itself is, you know, as a small business owner, having that input is good with the Health District to make sure that they're going through the, the quality spot check and taking care of public health on that side. So, we went through this process and having about two executive workshops with Commissioner's Court, where we discussed, hey, we need to negotiate this interlocal agreement and updated with the cities. And what we found throughout the years is that a lot of times what happens is through the interlocal, as it currently exists, and the Commissioner's Court nominates somebody, we send it out, and the majority of the cities, seven of the 13, need to confirm it, have them be put on the board. What we, what we saw, what we've experienced for several years, several decades, is it goes on consent, on the consent agenda from many councils and gets approved. And so, what we've done is tried to make that process easier and have just a direct consultation with the cities and a direct appointment mechanism by the Commissioner's Court. There's still input, there's still transparency. Your council has the ability to review the members who are being considered to be appointed and to raise any concerns you may have as a council or individually with the Commissioner's Court, to have them reconsider that nomination if you feel it's not a good fit or good representing, got good representation of the community. So, there's not a severe loss in how this will be functioned as far as appointments are concerned. And the benefit is we'll have a better functioning board moving forward, and we'll have a continued and even more renewed commitment from the county and funding and pursuing public health objectives and goals as a community. So, really, I just wanted to kind of specify that, lay that out and open any questions or concerns that the council may have regarding this. I, I do want to specify, as of today, 12 of the 13 cities have approved this MOU. And I think because of that, when we initially did that, we had our attorney kind of draft the interlocal agreement changes that the Commissioner's Court desired, and we shared it with the city managers or if it was the, you know, like in Texas City, we went direct to the mayor because they don't have a city manager. And we worked with them first through giving that notice in paper form, as well as email. And then, we reached out. And Jed Webb, you know, used to work for Congressman Randy Weber, and now he's our Director of Government Relations with the county for the whole Commissioner's Court. We assigned him to reach out to every city manager to have that communication, to find out what concerns that the communities may have regarding that. And that's where we got feedback saying, hey, we would really like some assurance and redesign MOU, say, at least one doctor on the board, right? And we said, absolutely. So, we went back to the table and doing that. Fortunately, here, with City of Lamarck, we had made multiple attempts to your city manager, never got a phone call back, never got an email back, nothing. And the first phone call Jed got was 19 minutes before your last council meeting. So, we attempted, we want input from Lamarck, right? We want you to be part of this public health initiative. But, the way that was attempted and the miscommunication kind of led to that breakdown to where last council meeting, I'm sure a lot of you were scratching, and said, what, what is this all about? Nobody ever reached out to us. So, we've renewed our focus and communications and leadership and having direct communications with the mayor, like we did this past week and last week at Communications. And we will do that, but I kind of wanted to speak to that kind of breakdown communication and how that kind of came about, how it happened.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yep.
We're going to open this up. Guys, stay put. We're going to open this up to the council. And we, I try to do it by seniority. And so, we'll start with Councilwoman McCullough.
Hi, y'all. Thank you for coming here. So, my biggest concerns just boil down to, you know, first off, it's obvious that an intercounty effort to maintain the GCHD is paramount, right? So, I'm all for renewing and refining, and especially in response to the things that were learned throughout the pandemic. My big concerns boil down to the dropping, it seems pretty drastic, 13 to five. And, but even, you know, I can get on board with that. And it's the, it's the elimination of the professional requirements when we're dealing with epidemiology. So, I'd just like for you to...
Absolutely. So, one thing that we, we did is that we went back to state law. And there was things actually in the interlocal that we are currently under that are actually out of, out of line, because, you know, legislation's always changing. So, we went back to say, what are the requirements that the state requires us to do? We wanted to pair that, so we're not out of line with that. Is the, is the final number, correct number five? Well, it may or may not be. Before, we were at nine, and we've been at different numbers in the past. We've always kind of shifted around. And really, the addition of these additional requirements, veterinarian, a dentist, all these different things, that happened in 2002. One of the challenges that we've seen, and then a member of UTMB had to be there, HCA, and all these other things, is that we wanted to get away from having any conflicts of interest. So, the board should be and only care about the citizens of Galveston County. And sometimes, when you get individuals on there who may represent a hospital or a dental office or something else, it creates a real challenge. And you said, let's not do that. Let's just get good members who are, who are experts in their field that are, are going to be engaged to, to solve that problem. So, I, I get what you're saying is, is, you know, 13 to five, what, whatever that number is. Part of this agreement, too, is that in, in 10 years, we'll review it again. And we'll say, hey, maybe, maybe five was too little, let's go up, back up to seven. Or, let's add this or that requirement. But, so, we, we just went back to the state code, said, what are the, what are we required to do? And then, to make sure that there's, get rid of those conflicts of interest.
I'd like to also address that is, currently with the Health District, how it functions, they have subcommittees, an Animal Resource Center Committee, where they have board members who kind of attend that. And I, I think what we're going to see come from this is these kind of advisory committees will have non-board of health members on it. Where we'll see the veterinarian and other type of qualified experts in the community being part of how we drive those kind of policies to have that board end up adopting them. So, it's not, it's not really a fully reduction of 13 members. It's 13 voting members. But in regards to the community involvement of any expertise, that'll continue to function and all those types of functions through advisory councils that we'll see when the new board starts creating a new set of bylaws for the organization.
And, no, and I think I must have just missed it in this community version, where it does specify that a physician has to be one of the physicians. Can you speak to that a little bit more?
Absolutely. So, the, the initial one we sent y'all did not have that. And then, we sent a revised one. Hopefully, y'all have that, that it says that a licensed physician. So, there's, that be prior to, they didn't have to be citizens of Galveston County. We say, I think we learned something from the cold weather storm. Let's have members actually live in their community. So, yes, they have to be citizens for at least the last three years, and a licensed physician has to be on the board.
But that's the only professional requirement out of the five positions?
Those are, yes, that was, because that was the feedback that we got specifically from a number of cities, and hey, we'd feel more comfortable if we had that. So, that was...
Well, I will say that, you know, again, I'll reiterate that 13 to five feels drastic, but I can wrap my head around, you know, if quorum has been, if I heard you correctly, quorum's been the top issue, perhaps?
Yes.
Like, where you can kind of reliably get around seven, but that's...
Yeah, quorum, and yes. And then, having all these different requirements, trying to find those individuals who are really passionate to, to serve public health.
And I can also get on board with the fact that, like, there must be a veterinarian, there must be someone from mainland, like, these, like, little Lego people positions could be difficult, but I can't wrap my head around there only being a requirement for one physician and those four other physicians being, ooh, you know? Especially because we are coming, we're still experiencing COVID-19, right? And just the idea of, what if there are four other really smart people on that board, but, you know, they are a titan of industry and, you know, somebody else's really smart cousin or whatever. And I'm not trying to, you know, make any accusations of wrongdoing. That's not where that comes from, but just how will it look on a local and national stage if we encounter something else dire? And, you know, I mean, this board has one doctor, but that's it, and no one else has any kind of health specialties.
Um, so, just, just so that you're aware, there's a commitment to make sure, you know, sometimes, someone who's really passionate and knowledgeable is a, is a pharmacist or a registered nurse who has that. And so, crafting that, and this is where we kind of ran into the problem of what, what they did in 2002, is they tried to figure all that. And they said, well, we don't have that individual necessarily. And so, having the, we want to have a good board. We want to have a great Health District. Because something that we found is that Health District wasn't fully prepared or prepared enough for COVID-19. And thank goodness, we had Dr. Kaiser, who is an expert, who has spent his whole career studying for this and preparing for this type of thing. And was a great asset to the whole county. That's, that's one of the reasons we're able to get to that level. It is nice to have UTMB with the infectious disease experts down there as well. We got a lot of, uh, smart folks in this county with regards to that. But, but I do get what you're saying with that one requirement.
And to address your concern currently, what we're looking at for appointment to this board, absent of any major objections from the councils, are two physicians. One that's retired, one that has a background in public health. She has a master's approach, she studied the master's program in public health. And those are the two appointments there. One is a registered nurse, and the other one's a pharmacist. And so, that's the, the four members right there we're looking at. So, out of the four, the five right now, we're looking at for appointment, highly expert in the field, two of them current board members. One is a current nurse on the board who represents that field. And the other one's a current pharmacist on the board, represents that field. And they have almost perfect attendance records as well. So, so what we're looking for is out of the five members, having an engaged five members who are there, they meet once a month to come to that meeting, all five. So, we don't have to search or worry about a three-member quorum or anything like that. And I think what we'll discover if there are challenges to that is a renewed discussion with the cities on maybe improving it if, if need be.
Well, I, I love, I love hearing that. That's great. Again, though, it just brings me back to, well, that's great for the immediate term, right? And I trust the members of the Commissioner's Court now to, like, this is where we're going, this is the plan. But these are two-year appointments, right? And let's say the entire Commissioner's Court turns over in five years, we're looking at new appointments. And how do we have assurance that beyond the one doctor, it's not just four people who get cherry picked by Commissioner's Court members who want to give someone something that makes them feel really great about being on the board?
Right. So, I think that the accountability component in that situation, where if that were to become a concern, that type of, you know, decision-making, would be the councils addressing it and raising that concern and having the public holding these elected officials accountable to having, if they're political appointments or whatever. It just don't make any sense to be on a, a board of health. And I think from that scrutiny engaged by the cities and the community, you can hold the Commissioner's Court accountable to that and ensuring that...
Could you talk us through what that accountability element is? Like, walk through again the process of how you envision ideally, you know, you said earlier, you know, it gets on the consent agenda, and it's a pretty, like, rote process in the past.
How it's...
But now, it's changing. And like, you just use that again.
So, how that would be moving forward is the council will be presented through your city staff or the mayor, a list of the individuals being considered for appointment. And from that point, the council can take no action, or you can review. And you would have their, their resumes attached to it. And from that angle, you'd be able to raise concerns through the council either jointly or individually as a council member, reaching out to your commissioner or county judge and speaking to them about it. I think accountability, meaning on the aspect of, these are elected public officials, just like yourself, and they're accountable to you just as much as they are accountable to the citizens of Lamarck and the citizens of any other city here in the county. And that's how the city's engagement can be moving forward. If you find that this is going in a way where not the appropriate people are not being put on the board, that's your accountability mechanism. And, and, you know, they can always explore down the road. If that does become an issue, renegotiating the way that MOU is designed to put more safeguards in place if need be. But, for the current time being, I, you know, I highly, I, I get where you're coming from in the aspect of, not a problem now, but what about down the road? We don't know, right? We don't know who the county judge is or the commissioner is going to be. There's a lot of unknowns.
And, and just to, just so that I'm fully understanding, it would be now just a direct conversation around the Commissioner's Court office to the mayor or the city manager's office of each municipality, saying, hey, here's the positions that are up, these are the people we're nominating.
Here's a, here's who we're considering for appointing, but Commissioner's Court hasn't taken action yet. Here's a notification with their backgrounds. And it presents the opportunity for that to be disseminated to the council members, whether it's through staff or the mayor's office, to say, here's what we were presented, and then take relevant feedback if need be. I, I think we're pretty confident, based on the appointments for this two-year term, that most likely is going to pass scrutiny with everybody. But, definitely understand your concerns for the future.
And then, it just, but it doesn't end up on any municipality's agenda unless they add it as a discussion point?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And I, and I think it goes back to, too, is if we could have had engagement on this communication several weeks ago, you know, we could have negotiated something into the MOU to maybe put you a little more ease for how that future process would look. With the other 12 municipalities, the only feedback we got from them on concerns was we just wanted that one member kind of to be a vet, secure physician, definite physician, right? Someone with that medical degree, so. So, it's what I'm getting at. Here we are with 12 signed MOUs. It's taken a month to kind of put together, and they've passed it. It's gone through their scrutiny, and it's, it's difficult to try to revisit that and recreate the, the entire document and kind of put in that kind of negotiations again with all of the municipalities.
And then, so, difficult, not impossible, but difficult. Which one?
It was difficult, it was very difficult to get to where we are today. It's the, it's the most, I guess, politically correct way I could say it. Yeah, it was...
And if it wasn't to pass tonight, what are the ramifications of that?
I think what we would see is continue to try to explore conversations with the city. However, you know, I don't think anybody's looking to try to go, I'll talk worst-case scenario, not where we want to go. I'll talk worst case scenario, not where we want to go, is there would be a notice given to the city of Lamarck that within 12 months' time period, that the city of Lamarck would no longer be participating in this new structure of the health district as it's designed under this new MOU. And I think that comes to a detriment, not just to the city of Lamarck, but the entire county, all the communities and the inner corporate areas together. So we would encourage you to jump into this with us together as a community with all the other 12 cities. And we really value your input and your partnership in this. And we would hate for it to race to that level. It wouldn't be immediate, but I'm talking worst case scenario down the road. It, it could get to that situation if we can't find a way to pass this MOU in its current form.
And to parse that further, that means a letter would go out saying worst case scenario, our citizens of Lamarck are no longer like eligible for.
It would actually be that the city would have to provide those health functions.
Yeah. So under the Texas Health and Safety Code, there are certain functions that municipalities must provide to their citizens, right? And that would essentially push that responsibility on to the city of Lamarck to provide whatever that date will become if it went down that road, which will come at or the assumption will become at an added financial cost to the city. But again, nobody's speaking to that or looking to do that. We're hoping to resolve this issue together and, and stay remain committed. And it takes a little level of trust between these political entities in the county. And, and we hope we've earned that trust and, and you can, can, can continue engaging in this health district function with us together as a community. And we're open to feedback and that accountability measure, right? Also the board, they meet once a month right down the street from here at the McCounty Annex, right? The health district is, engagement with the board is important too. I think they have prior to the pandemic, it was very limited engagement with the communities and the cities. And there's a lot of misunderstanding of, well, the health district, that's kind of, that's a county's health district. I know it's, it's all of our health district, right? As, as a community, so.
Mayor, could I ask a question and clarify a little bit on the legal side of that?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So just for the, the council's information, and then these gentlemen can correct me if they have a different understanding. But under the current interlocal, the only way you can amend the interlocal is if all the member cities approve it. So if Lamarck doesn't approve it, then the interlocal is not amended. However, to get to that eventuality they're talking about, where the city of Lamarck would no longer be a member of the health district, there's a couple of ways to come at it, but one of them would be if the city of Lamarck chose to withdraw with one year's advance notice. Another way would be if all the member cities and the county voted for the city to no longer be a part of it. So it's, it's not just a matter of if you don't approve this, you're out of the district, correct?
Yeah, you're correct. I think the way we would, we would probably explore that would be the county sending notice of withdrawal prior to accepting the new MOU with the 12 cities and the new MOU would create a new health district. Yeah. So that's how that would be engaged. So technically correct, that's the option. The other way is the county submitting withdrawal to the city saying the 12-month notice in the current form of the health district, we're no longer participating. And then we would sign the new MOUs with the cities, which would redesign pretty much a new health district, which would still be housed and functionally.
And Mr. Drummond, the end result would be the same?
Yes.
Lamarck would be excluded?
Correct.
Okay.
But within that timeframe, like I said, 12 months.
Okay.
Wouldn't be immediate.
Sure, I understand. Councilwoman, you're done?
I'll pause for now. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, you ready?
Yeah, let me, let me just make an observation first, that the amendments that have been talked about with regard to some subsequent changes, including a doctor, that's not included on our that's not what we're voting on. We don't have those here in our package. That's inconsistent with what we're, what we've now posted and we're voting on. So I, I'm just telling you, we're, we're not, we're not there.
That was sent to the city, the revised documents were sent to all, all cities.
Mr. Webb, you, so you're, so you're saying that you sent us a copy of the revised?
Yes.
Document? And it's not in our packet tonight?
It was sent to the city on 5/20.
A copy of the revised document was sent to this city on 5/20. Did you, did you read your, your packet, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I read it.
All the way through?
Yeah, believe me, I've read more than.
Did you read your packet?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCollum, did you read your packet?
So I, I'm just saying that what we're posted is not, it's not what was, what it's been talking about.
Yeah, the item in your packet is, the, the last thing received is May 3rd.
But you, but you recent, you sent the new document?
Yeah, so the revised document of, of that request, yes, I can pull it up and. Yes, it actually was sent on 13th.
5/13?
Yes, that was the revised document was sent to the city. It was sent to Mr. Jackson.
Was it sent directly to?
It was sent to all the, um, the city managers and, and city attorneys and things like that. So yes, it was sent.
So our city received this on 5/13?
Yes, sir.
And here we are on 6/11 without the revised document. Mayor Protem, would you? Would you like to proceed with your? That breaks.
We're not, we're not able to proceed. That's all we can add to the list.
So.
An amendment.
If I could speak to that, Mayor, would that be okay?
Yes, ma'am, good.
Okay, so the, the council can actually, as long as we discuss the specific details that are the changes between the interlocal in your packet and the interlocal being proposed by the county, as long as those are discussed in an open session and agreed to by the council, you could still proceed.
Well, if you give me the specific language, I'm not going to have any discussion without seeing documents.
Under, under.
You have that right, Mayor Protem.
I can, I can email it to whomever would like it right now.
And you can email it. I mean, I could take a look at them.
I think Kyle's gonna, can you print us one, two, three, four, five, six copies, Kyle? Thank you so much. Thank you guys for your patience.
Oh, absolutely.
Has he got it to print?
Mayor, I've recommended recess till we get the right documents.
That might not be a bad idea. What say you, Councilwoman? Mayor Protem? Let's, let's recess. Oh, Robin left us. Kyle, do you have time? Let's recess at 4:49. We'll reconvene at, Kyle, what do you need, five minutes?
Yeah.
We'll reconvene at 4:55. The special council meeting of the Lamarck City Council has re-convened at 4:55, 4:56. We are in a discussion with the Galveston County Judge's Office along with Commissioner Holmes, Precinct Three and Commissioner Justy, Precinct Two, as it relates to restructuring the Gauss County Health District and the United Board of Health. Mayor Protem was in the process of questioning the county representatives about this impending agreement. Mayor Protem?
So I don't care if you're trying to fuck me up or anybody. What is lying about the, about the position?
Is that something you can print?
Then, um, the end of paragraph, on the top paragraph page right there, it says, at a licensed physician. One shall be a licensed physician. The paragraph one? Let's see.
I see paragraph one, but I don't see anything about license.
Now, my mic's on, I'm sorry.
Why not?
Make sure you have the.
Yeah, this is the one sent.
I think that's the original one you guys had.
Revised email.
Is.
It was dinner local.
Yeah. Did you have the one on, on the 20th?
No, I have nothing on the 20th.
Go back to find out where. Make sure you guys get the right one. Let's do that. May have been the original one I sent you. So the email that I sent you on 5/20 is the document.
So the actual date was the, the first date?
So the first one, that, that was the 13th, that was the original email that was sent.
But 5/20 was revised?
Yes.
And you did send that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's, okay, gotcha.
So when it, when it called revised, that's the updated document that we first sent out. Then the 20th is when it said that, that change with there. Yep. So do you have that now?
I do.
For that, we got.
He's got a little.
Okay.
A lot of information, so.
Okay, so let's do this.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead. I'm gonna continue.
Okay.
My question.
And then, and then we'll go back. So Mayor Protem will continue his questioning and then when Kyle prints the documents,
Perfect.
Uh, he'll come back to that part of his questioning.
Okay.
You can imagine a lot of housekeeping when you work with.
Okay.
You can imagine a lot of housekeeping when you work with. May have been the original one I sent you. All the other cities have the, the updated one. I just sent you that. That all the cities have signed on to. Apologies for that. So on, yeah, 5/20. Yes, so the email that I sent you on 5/20 is the document.
So the actual date was the, the first date?
So the first one, that, that was the 13th, that was the original email that was sent.
But 5/20 was revised?
The, the, yes.
And you did send that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's, okay, gotcha.
So when it, when it called revised, that's the updated document that we first sent out. Then the, the 20th is when it said that, that change with there. Yep. So do you have that now?
I do.
For that, we got.
He's got a little.
Okay.
A lot of information, so.
Okay, so let's do this.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead. I'm gonna continue.
Okay.
My question.
And then, and then we'll go back. So Mayor Protem will continue his questioning and then when Kyle prints the documents,
Perfect.
Uh, he'll come back to that part of his questioning.
Okay.
You can imagine a lot of housekeeping when you work with.
I'm, I'm, explain to me the, I, I, I know the document, the original document talks about revisiting every 10 years, that, that I understand. What I'm I guess in my, in my world, in my mind, the you have a list, you have a. you have a list, you have a bylaws of the United Board of Health.
Yes.
Right now. And in those bylaws, which we're not including in the package, go to your United Board of Health, in the bylaws, there is, once again, in my, my little world, any changes start with the methodology set forth, set forth in your bylaws. So for me, the Board of Health, has the Board of Health ever passed any sort of resolution indicating that they wish to restructure the, the, the Board of Health? That's my question.
Okay, so the Board of Health is created by the cities and the county, and that they, this interlocal agreement is that charter agreement on which the United Board of Health then creates their, their bylaws and how they, they govern. And so it is up to the cities and the county who are chartering that, creating that entity to be able to do that. That, if that answers your question.
No. First of all, one, is, has there been a, an any sort of indication by the existing Board of Directors of the Board of Health that there's a, that this change is necessary? Some question?
No, they've, they've taken no vote on this, and they've actually proactively, in their discussion, said that is not their place to vote, or, or exercise that. The current chairman, in their last meeting, asked that they didn't make, and didn't comment, didn't review that. That was the decision by the board.
Okay. The, in, in the bylaws, what, a comment, I don't know, was made earlier with regard to, should we not agree, you know, you're gonna have to assume some responsibility, or you may have to assume some responsibilities. I, I, do we all agree, and certainly the commissioners, and I, I know certainly, in the past, Commissioner Justy was not on the, Commissioner Court, but certainly Commissioner Holmes, that there's an obligation by the county that's set up by state law to provide care for the medically indigent.
There are.
That's the, you're correct, that's the Coastal Health and Wellness Clinic.
Okay.
And that's actually a separate entity.
Actually, it's in the bylaws.
Correct.
It's set up, under your existing bylaws.
To clarify Mr. Webb's point before, the governing document of the Health District, the United Board of Health, is the actual interlocal between the cities and the county.
Right.
The United Board of Health develops their own bylaws. That board votes and develops their own bylaws. So that, the bylaws are not an actual governing document, other than a document on how the board governs itself and administering their duties.
Well, actually, the bylaws that were established set up the separate Coastal Health and Wellness, which in the past was known as the Four Seas Clinic.
Correct.
Okay, so there, there is a, there is a, a, let's call it a chain here, that, that's crucial, and I don't want anybody to, to, to believe, to believe that should we decide to reject these changes, that the medically indigent will be denied any sort of health care. I want that to be very clear.
Very correct. The Coastal Health and Wellness will continue to serve all indigent residents throughout the county.
Under, as a federally qualified health center.
You're correct, sir. That, that will not change. There's ten public health functions within the state Health and Safety Code, which municipalities must perform. The county indigent health care, that's a separate issue. So, yes, thank you for clarifying that. That will not be affected. Your residents will still have access to that clinic.
Okay.
Yes. So under this agreement.
And so we may, if we reject this, we may decide that we need to start inspecting our own food establishments, if we wish, or alternatively, we may contract with somebody to do that as well, too, or any of these services. We could even contract with them if they wish.
To clarify that, I believe the cities, you already do contract for the Health District, because that's an added responsibility, right? That's not through state code that must be performed through the district, right? So when I say, when we look at the public health functions, I believe it's in the original, did everybody on the board receive, or the council receive the original documents sent by your attorney, Paul Ready, which kind of lays out the basic functions that are required by state law? I think he gets into detail about restaurant inspections, animal resource center, like, you know.
Yeah.
That's all additional services where we have communities are paying into that through some sort of fee. So those are, those are outside the scope of the state mandated.
Well, let's just, let's just make sure that everybody's clear, too. The ten essential public health functions of the Galveston County United Board of Health, they are to monitor the health status of individuals in the community, to identify community health problems. Okay, that would be, for example, example would be an individual that's diagnosed with, I'm trying to think of that term, it's, it's been largely eliminated, but we still, is it, not looking. No, it's another infectious disease.
I know, you're, I'm trying.
Yeah, it's, it's predominantly in, in, in people that have not have access to health care.
Yeah, and that's Dr. Kaiser's background.
Okay, tuberculosis, that's one of those functions. And, and of course, every child needs to have their, I believe they're still doing that, right? God knows, I've been in school for so long, but I think you have to have a tuberculosis test still before you get into any school, correct? I believe. And you diagnose and investigate community health problems and community health hazards. So if we come to you saying that we've got some sort of health hazard created by raw sewage dumping to someplace, things of that nature, we would be contacting. Inform, educate, and empower the community with respect to health issues. Mobilize community partners, partnerships in identifying and solving community health problems. Develop policies and plans to support individual and community efforts to improve health. Enforce laws and rules to protect the public health and ensure safety in accordance. And link individuals who have a community, who have a need for community personal health services, to appropriate community and private providers, and there are three other items. So let me, let me continue then, the, the. You're suggesting a five-member board, and we have, our board operates as, in effect as an administrative board, it's a governing body of this United Board of Health, correct?
I'm sorry.
The, the, the eleven member, or alternatively, if this is accepted, the new five-member group are in effect the governing board of this United Board of Health.
Yes, yes, so they perform three functions. Appointment of the executive director.
Which who's a licensed physician. Will that continue?
Well, that's where we're at right now, with Dr. Kaiser as the interim, and we hope to continue that. Meaning the executive director, the executive director who's the employee that's assigned by the United Board of Health, be someone that can also be in a public health role and have a medical background. The previous executive director, who we've had during the pandemic, did not have any public health background or beyond, it was financial background, really. She was the former chief financial officer of the district before she was given that executive director role. Prior to her is Dr. Guidry, and Dr. Guidry was the public health authority and the executive director. And I believe in speaking with the, the court, we would like to try to pursue making sure that Dr. Kaiser's the interim right now, hopefully the, the final executive director, whatever, once they find, whether it's him or a new candidate, be someone who can be the public health authority and the executive director at the time. We're hoping it's Dr. Kaiser, but we don't know, right?
Well, I would ask that you're, in your qualifications, that you seek a licensed physician in that role.
I, I think we're all on the same page.
On that, on that side. Although, I mean, the statute section, or section one oh, chapter one twenty-one, does permit you to have a, a non-physician, but you still have to have a physician in an advisory capacity.
And that's our public health authority, Dr. Kaiser, in the role, and the former executive director who retired, Kathy Brasso, didn't have that kind of background experience. So that's why we had Dr. Kaiser separately as the public health authority. Traditionally, in the past, the counties had the executive director also be that public health authority.
I, I share two concern, well, one concern that Casey was talking about is the, the loss of, of medical professionals of any, of any area. It could be, you know, it could be veterinary science, whatever, but, but that, that relationship there. And I also concerned about the loss of diversity. The eleven member had very little diversity as it is, and now we're gonna go to five, and we have no diversity, and of course, I'm not, I find that objectionable, period.
Well, I, I think, without meaning to interrupt you, sir, the, the new board that will be appointed, we feel will be, as far as, on a per capita basis, reference the current board, way, a lot more diverse than the current board. I mean, we're looking at assignment of the four or five members being women and one of color, I think one of Hispanic descent. So actually, I think we're gonna have a well-representation of diversity here in our community on the Board of Health.
Okay, well, that's refreshing, and we've got that on tape.
Yeah.
Now, now, I'll extend that. There's no reason at all, if the, if the commissioners so desired, by the way, if the commissioners so desired for us to go ahead and include an advisory board here, you referenced these subcommittees, but there's not any, if the commissioners desire, to go ahead and expand community members, if they wish to participate, in some sort of advisory capacity. They wouldn't have any voting rights, but they would be their part of something bigger, and, and, and I can't think of health as being anything bigger in terms of our community. I'd just throw that out.
So that's a, it's a good concern, and I think the way to achieve that is through the bylaws, right? So this new board, when they get appointed, they, one of the first things they'll engage in is reviewing their bylaws, their governing document for the board. And within that, it's our hope and the guidance that they'll receive is to develop advisory reports of citizens that would be, that the board would have on there, right? There would not be political appointments, it wouldn't be the commissioners or the judge making that, it'd be the board finding members to maybe assist them, the veterinarians that they'd want on the animal resource board.
Or the cities themselves suggesting people, you know, please.
And that, and that's where we come with the engagement of, I think it's critical, and we haven't had it in the past with all the cities, right, all thirteen is, to, for the cities to engage with the board, to communicate, speak to the executive director, Dr. Kaiser, who's in that current form, or the board members themselves, whoever the chair may be, or the board members, to let them know and give them that input, so they know what the community expectations are from the municipal leadership here in the community on how you would like to see engagement from members of the community. I think that's very fair, and I, I think you're gonna find that over the next several weeks, a month, as this gets designed and put together. And I know the document says to revisit it every ten years. If something's broken, I'm probably pretty confident saying that these cities are gonna come and say, it's time to revisit this document. I feel very confident in saying that. So, and I, and I say that, that's, that's an accountability piece, right? Hey, county, we need to look at this, this isn't working. It's not working in the way that we feel it should in the public's best interest.
And the last thing that, I'll close my, my with a comment and a request. There's the authority given to, under the chapter one twenty-one specifically, that this entity seek as many grants and seek as much funding as possible related to public health. And we don't see enough of that, in my opinion. We don't see that in sufficient amount to, to really benefit communities that are left out. And, and, and community health as well, by the way, and I have a very expansive definition, but we have communities like, like Freddyville or even parts of Hitchcock, our own community here of Lamark, where public health is directly impacted by our water systems that are breaking down and, and over time. So grants in any sort of direction that, that, that a United Board of Health can provide and develop our health policy and look at, and look at the needs related to that, as we, as we, as we get old and pass on and have younger people assume these roles, I wouldn't encourage this, this group to do. That's all I have, Mr. Webb.
To address that, too, I think you, you're kind of addressing things that we are well on, especially with the American Rescue Plan that came out, and how municipalities and the county have received fifty percent of the funds, and part of those allowed expenditures is public health initiatives, right? And what we've also seen is the Health District has gotten an allocation from the federal government and from the state, and Coastal Health and Wellness got a direct federal allocation of well over four million dollars to invest in their programs and clinics. And I think, right now, the Commissioners' Court on Monday, in their meeting, has a workshop to talk about ARP funding, and one of the discussions that they will have is whether they want to pursue hiring some staff on the county level to be pursuing these federal grants, because in addition to these direct allocations, we see tens of billions of dollars that have been allocated to federal programs and state programs for us to be chasing after. And I would, they haven't had the discussion yet, but I would bet good money, if I was a betting man, that they're probably gonna pursue that, because that's money that they can use with their ARP funding to pay for that staffing for the next four years, to pursue those grant opportunities. So I think you hit it right on the head, and I think you'll see a lot of that here over the next several months and years, to see expansive grant programs that are coming to the county for public health and community health through the Coastal Health and Wellness Center.
Okay, great things.
One thing I would say, moving forward, is that as we partner in these things, take for example, the testing program where we became the highest tested county in the state, and at one point, one of the highest in the, in the, in the country, is that we do want to work with you and be proactive. The cities we got, the monies we got from CARES Act, we were able to work with majority of the cities to be able to test and ensure that we had enough funding for that. Unfortunately, your city was one of them that was unable or unwilling, I know there are some other people, to, to participate in that program. We would love to be able to partner, so we can get that public health, because it's essential to, to individuals. So as we move forward, we want to work together, we want to partner, so we can help all of our residents. So thank you.
Mr. Carlson.
I feel a lot better listening to you guys, understanding now some of the things that we didn't know at the council meeting. And it put me at ease now, as far as knowing that you guys are gonna have these subcommittees, because I'm a huge dog lover, so knowing if we have a dog pandemic, that they'll be taken care of. Everything else makes common sense. I do, I would like to hopefully see you guys be able to get that executive director and the health be the same person, because that makes common sense, and I'm a common sense person, so I like that. Hopefully you can get that done. Other than that, my questions have been answered. My, the other council people have, uh, settled that.
Take care of you.
Yes, sir. So I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Um, Mr. Webb, or Mr. Drummond, doesn't matter. In fact, Mr. Drummond, why don't you return? Because I, I think you started to, to describe for us the functions of this board. And so one of the things you said was that this board is responsible for appointing the executive director, and then you had two other items that you were.
Approving the budget, the organization, which then goes to the Commissioners' Court, and they approve through their annual budget process, just like the city does. And the third is strategic, strategy planning, like, council member, you were bringing up early about, you know, a strategy on grant funding opportunities, public health initiatives, community health initiatives through the clinic. Those are the three main job responsibilities of the board. And, you know, some of the things that, the housekeeping, housekeeping items, when we develop the bylaws with this new board, when they're appointed, is that, you know, minor details, but they're big on a transparency level, right? Right now, the only person reporting to the board is the executive director, right? Well, we'd like to see the chief financial officer report to the board as well, right? So there's a little more level of financial transparency in the organization, not saying anything improper was going on at all, but to clean things up a little bit, to make it function a little similar to how city councils and the county Commissioners' Court function, right? The CFO reports direct to us, they don't report to the city manager or someone like that. Increase transparency, and I think it's gonna increase performance down the road. So those are the three main things.
And so, Mr. Drummond, you said strategy and, and planning. Would, would potentially their role in, in strategic planning, would that in any way be able to alter and in a significant way, uh, the district's ability to provide service?
Outside of, um, outside of coastal health and wellness, so I want to clarify that. The indigent healthcare clinic, that's governed and kind of operated by set rules, very rigid rules by the federal government, based on the amount of money that the county receives and federal grants to provide those services through the clinic. The types of initiatives they would engage in would be assisting the executive director in developing the community public health plan, which has to be submitted every few years to the state. And of that comes, again, we've been talking about it this evening, community engagement and input. And I believe they seek that when they do that every few years for public comment and input periods. So, uh, outside of that, that's really the big role for strategic planning is kind of assisting the executive director in that strategy. And I think having the board members that we're looking at with their health background are going to provide a very strong strategic direction in the future. Because I believe that plan is coming up in the next year.
Absolutely. And 2022 is, the previous one is fire something. But mayor, when you talk about our, is their ability to do something outside those, really that strategic plan is to take those 10 essential health functions and how to carry them out as effective as possible. And so the, the board is required, health districts is required to carry on those functions. So the strategic plan is saying, okay, how do we do these 10 things better? And how do we get out into the community?
And that's where we see the public health programs, like, uh, the council members bringing up earlier about, uh, public identification of health risks. It's where we have a team of, whole department of epidemiologists, right? That's what they do. They're on top of, there are outbreaks that occur. And we've seen that this past year with COVID, right? Having that staff on board, highly trained, qualified staff who know when we get into a pandemic, how to engage the process moving forward. So, uh, on a strategy level, the board would be assisting the executive director and engaging what that strategy should be. Again, I believe that can't be, I'm pretty positive, it cannot be passed without public comment and opening that up for public transparency and input from the community.
So I, I heard you say that, that this strategic plan had to be submitted to the state? Did I hear you say something about that?
There's a, there's, every few years, they have to submit a statewide public health strategic plan. And the one that we're speaking of comes up next year. So they'll be starting to gauge that process probably towards the end of this year and having those discussions.
Is that for every, every part of your operation outside of the wellness, the coastal wellness?
I think it's tied into two parts. I think it's tied into the statutory functions of the health district, like municipalities, like we're supposed to provide those 10 functions, as well as, um, I think it gets mirrored with the Department of Health and Human Services of the state on state grant opportunities. Because the state also provides certain grant functions for, you know, HIV programs, right, in the community, and certain types of services like that, which go beyond the coastal health and wellness, which is the public health clinic for indigent care in the county.
And so this, this, this plan would have to be approved on a state level?
That, that plan gets approved by the Board of Health and then submitted to the state level.
And when it gets to the state level, would it then have to be approved?
The Department of Health and Services, Department of Health and Human Services reviews it and accepts it.
And so, so the point of this, this line of questioning is, is to suggest that, that, that whatever this board would do, certainly be vetted by, by different governmental agencies, even, even by the state of Texas. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Um, and then I wanted to drill really quickly down on this, this idea. Mayor Protem, rightfully so, pointed out that there is a part of your function that is federally motivated, federally funded, if you will, and federally directed. But then there are the, these other nine functions that, that, that we talked about. And earlier, we were, we were talking about this idea that the way that, that the, uh, county would, would exclude us, if you will, if, if we chose not to participate, would be to, to dissolve, uh, the, the, uh, the cities, the agreement, the inter, interlocal agreement that we have with the cities, and then would then move forward with a new one that excluded La Mark.
So we would, the action of what that will look like, again, speaking in terms of, I don't believe we're going to get there, is, uh, how that would act, action, how that would happen in functionality is, we would send notice that the county is withdrawing from the current health district in its design and form, which then starts the clock 12 months, which kind of has the current health district form kind of fall apart. But we have 12 MOUs with the cities that we would then sign and engage in, which would, in essence, continue on beyond that period, health district function, just without the membership of the city that didn't vote to sign that MOU. But again, we're not looking to get there at all.
Sure. Sure. But, but, but the point I wanted to, I wanted to bring out, Mr. Drummond, is, is, and then those services would then still be available to us by contract, but then we would perhaps have to pay for them?
That's a possibility.
And that, that's the point that I'm trying to bring out for the council to, to understand. Uh, and I think that maybe Mayor Protem was, was suggesting that as well. Uh, those services, restaurant inspection, we would either have to find a way to found our own department to do that, or we would contract with you guys, uh, but then we would have to pay a fee, uh, in the same way that we pay a fee for, for our, our animal control, if you will.
So the cities, um, it would be more of a function of, the cities who engage in those services with the health district, like Animal, or Animal Resource Center, you already pay into that with the health district.
Right.
Because that's beyond the scope of what the statute says you must perform. The functions of staff and the epidemiologists and the, and the wastewater, you know, the water control individual who's doing the testing, stuff like that, you would then have to take on that responsibility of providing those services in your community, or you could contract with the county to do that. But like Animal Resource Center, Restaurant, I wouldn't use those examples, because municipalities are already partnering with the district by paying a nominal fee for those services. And your residents, Leaks, La Mark, um, they pay their county tax rate, like everybody else in the county. They're already paying for these services, right, through the county tax rate. And then that's what's being provided to them.
Right.
So by essence, having to go into a contract with the health district to provide whatever public health services we're discussing, you know, since they're already paying for it through their county tax rate, now the municipality's having to contract for those services that other cities are getting, because their residents paying for that rate already.
So the citizens are paying taxes. And at this point, for much of this, the municipality doesn't have to pay, right?
Nothing outside of those specified things.
Right, right, right. So, so the point to that is, is basically, we're getting these services for free. And if we were to be excluded from this interlocal agreement, then we would have to find a way to find the resources to provide these services for our citizens.
Our assumption would be there would be a financial impact to the city of La Mark. I, I don't know how large or how small, but there would be a financial impact.
Okay. Okay. Last, the last thing I wanted to ask you, uh, and I guess this is a question for Mr. Webb. The document that we, we finally received, this document.
Absolutely.
This document was sent to our city on what date?
So that document was sent to your city on 5/20/21. So, the original documents, um, and then was on prior to that. But yes, that document.
What ways, what ways did you send it?
So, uh, well, I sent the original, um, hard copies to, to the mayor, to all you, to everybody, to the city, but addressed to everyone here. Then I followed up with an email on the 13th, after which I followed up the email on the 20th. I called the office on the 20th and left a message. I also called on the 17th, the 20th, and then on the first of, uh, June. So.
Okay. But this document with the, with the added changes was sent to us on 5/20?
5/20, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Um, does any other council member have any other questions?
I do, actually. So I, you know, it's a pretty big elephant in the room, right? For it to be that, you know, you're saying that this came to us, and we, you know, there's all this kerfuffle, and what we've been given today is not the, what we were given once we arrived was not the right version. So I'd like to hear from the city manager's office. I'd like to hear from Teak about this. But before we get to that, I just, I, I just want to make very clear that I have no interest in us withdrawing from the county health district. I think it is a boon for the city. And obviously, as you very succinctly said earlier, it works best if we all work together. Um, I do still feel deeply uncomfortable with the idea of a five-person board where only one person is a licensed physician on the United Board of Health. That sits really wrong for me. Looking at, you know, the different folks that, that are on the current board, again, I can, I am totally on board with, you know, now that I have context for why you wanted to go from 13 to five, that makes sense to me. But it doesn't make sense to me to drop that one, to drop all the professional requirements. Not because I have concerns about what's going to happen immediately, but because I'm concerned about what might happen in the next 10 years. And, um, yeah, just, it, it doesn't, you know, speaking of common sense, it just does not make sense to me. And that's not to say that I could not be convinced, you know, with more information and maybe hearing more from the commissioners and maybe your experiences, but, you know, thinking about, you know, in extreme moments of peril for the county health-wise, you know, and, or, and not even just the everyday mini disasters that encounter, that every municipality encounters, right, throughout the year, and so much of them health-related. And our onus on making sure that, you know, so much of what we do is about making decisions on behalf of other people and appointing people to make decisions on behalf of other people and hoping that those people make the best decisions on behalf of other people. If a united board of health ends up with only one doctor on it, um, and they are the ones to then appoint the executive, or the director of, you know, the, of the health district itself.
I would, yes, we, we share your concern. We do not want y'all to leave the health district. We love having you. We love having your residents. Wonderful. I would say that the two members that were selected to continue on the board, one's an RN, and one is the pharmacist. So, um, in addition to that, so I, I get, I get where you're saying from...
So what I'm wondering is if there's a, there has to be a way to meet in the middle here that, you know, if, like, if we were to, you know, talking through the process of, if we were to, you know, vote no, and what that would then kick in and, right, and, you know, that feels all kinds of scary, and that's not what we want to do. But I, I have to be honest about voting my conscience and what makes me deeply uncomfortable. Like, there has to be a way to meet, right? Like, I know it would be a pain to go back to 12 cities, especially, I mean, I fully expect if you did, you'd be like, well, La Mark's being a real problem, and, you know, they have these issues. Um, and I would fully take that on. Yes, please, Joe.
As I understand it, I've read this document, Casey, there may be an answer, make you feel more comfortable, at least. Uh, I'm not comfortable with just one, but the, the revisions here, assuming that we have a, a medical doctor as the executive director, the medical doctor, the ED, will sit on this board as well as the ex officio member.
Right, but that's not built into this. That's just how it would be.
It's, it's in, it's in the...
It's in the bylaws.
It's in there.
It is in the bylaws.
So you're, you're looking at the MOU, right? The MOU is designed on how the district's created. The board creates bylaws, which they currently have worked on. And the executive director is on the Board of Health. And so is the public health authority, right? So in the past, where those were two people, right now, it's one. Dr. Kaiser's the interim. So he would be on there as a non-voting member. But what we've seen over the past several decades is that executive director, that public health authority, they inform a lot of the direction of what happens with that board moving forward. This will be no different. And, and I think, I absolutely, I think we share and understand where your concerns are. I think where, when we designed this and sent it out to the municipalities, there are a few that raised that concern, and their fix to get them to okay was just at least one doctor, right? And we said, okay, so we went and revisited it. Though, though, the breakdown in communication that happened here puts us in this spot where we are today, right? Where on Monday, the commissioners' court on their agenda is set to vote and approve on the MOUs with the municipalities, right? Which is why the mayor called this special meeting today. But that doesn't stop it, right? I think what you'll see from this board appointment, which will be in effect for the next two years, we can revisit the conversation and have over the next two years, hey, let's revisit that MOU, and, and let's try to put that, that, those designations in there that you want to see, where there's two doctors and a nurse and a pharmacist or whatever, it may be, right? We can do that to get this moving forward, because we're kind of up against the deadline of, based on the grant opportunities and, and the board structure now, trying to get moving on it, so we don't get left behind on some of these opportunities that we're pursuing on the public health side. So that's why we're kind of in this 11th hour. And I'm not committing that, because I don't speak for each one of them individually, but it can be re-expored. And it all comes down to that communication between your mayor and the members, or yourself and the members of your council, and the members of the commissioners' court, and fixing that desire down the road. But if we would have been engaged in the conversation back in the 13th or 20th, you probably would see us coming back with some kind of way to get you to be comfortable with how that commitment would be there. But at the time where we are now, and we're getting these approved for Monday, disagreement is kind of where we're at at the moment. I mean, does that, I, I understand where you're coming from.
I hear you. And I, I mean...
I wish it was different.
Let me, I just to interject here.
Sure, go ahead.
Whatever the, oh, I'm sorry, good, good. I just, whatever the mix-up or the documents, whatever, what other time that we had, the presence of two county commissioners here, Commissioner Juisty and Commissioner Holmes here, as well as the illustrious Tyler Drummond, the chief of staff for the county judge here at this little, small, little city council meeting. And I appreciate that. So whatever happened, it happened for a reason, right? So it's good to have you guys.
I just wanted to reiterate to you guys that I gave you my cell phone number. And if this doesn't look like it's going in the direction that you think it needs to go, any, call my cell number, and I will put it on our agenda to revisit. That's my personal promise to you. I will get it on there to revisit. Other than that, I don't know what I can tell you. I know Commissioner Holmes thinks a lot like I do, but not exactly.
I, I was just going to say, Commissioner Juisty, I, I feel strongly that Commissioner Holmes would do that for us as well.
I don't know who I want to speak for. Yeah, let me just, just say a couple of things here. This has been a very good discussion, I will say. And I appreciate you all being honest and sharing your thoughts about everything. But one thing that I, I would point out, certainly in my years as county commissioner, we point various boards, see a lot of different things in, in Council McCall, uh, you, Councilwoman McCall, you talked about the need for medical doctors and things of that nature on the board. Very good point. But more important than that, having a bunch of letters past your name, is having a good board member who applies themselves, who does the things that are necessary to be a good, good board member. We could appoint a bunch of doctors who never come to the meeting, who barely have time to get to the meeting, can't revoke, review the documents before the meeting. So more important than that is having a very good board member. And I think that, uh, some things you do have to rely on the commissioners' court to do, which is a point, good board members. Because after all, I'm accountable to the citizens of La Mark, just as you are here. So I want to do good things, and I want to do the right thing about the citizens of La Mark that I represent as well. So I think we have to put a little bit of trust into it as well, which it doesn't go into the four corners of, of the agreement, but uh, we got to put a little bit of, of trust in there as well, because we all, Mr. Juisty and there are other members of the commissioners' court as well, we're accountable to the citizens and the voters as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
To go along with that, I guess the ask tonight, if you're so willing, is to approve this MOU and keep the conversation going, so we can improve upon it. And I think they just, they're open to those discussions and negotiations. And I think you can get to that level where you'd want to be. And I can tell you, those board members who are going to be appointed, about four of the five members will have medical backgrounds. We're looking at a pharmacist. And right now, they're considering a pharmacist for Monday, pharmacist, a nurse, two physicians. One physician with a public health background, and one physician is retired, her husband is the head of the public health clinic at UTMB. Not Dr. Kaiser's wife, but yeah. So, so I guess with that level of trust, knowing that we can work to define this, to get to your comfort level, we can work beyond that this evening. It's to move us forward for this, for approval for Monday, if, if you're so willing to do that. And put the trust in, in those guys.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Carlson? Any other questions, calls, comments? Before we get into our action item, we're going to allow Mr. Jackson to respond, if he so chooses, to the idea and the issue of non-response.
Oh, so the email that we received on the 20th, the document in there is entitled Revised Proposing Local Agreements. It's the exact same as the title on the first one. There's nothing in the email that says it's been changed since we got the first one or that additional stuff's been put in it. It was already in the packet. I don't know if, if, if one got grabbed, if we grabbed that one, but there was no reason to, to believe that it had been changed, because nothing said it had been changed. Prior to it, I think I'd like to ask a question of, of Tyler and Jed. During COVID, when we had county-wide issues, the judge had phone calls with the mayors. So all the mayors could hear what the other spots were on items. Why did we not do that on this? It's like that would have been a whole lot easier than going and talking to people in the booth.
So, yeah, at the, at the height of pandemic, when there was severe concerns about the rest of the public, we had conference calls with Mayor Hawke and all the mayors where we discussed moving forward items, uh, shutdown orders, right, those types of discussions, we did that as a community. This item isn't, this isn't a public health emergency item. And I think the breakdown here was just a, a lack of calling back after messages were left for you, Teak. So Jed called, sent you the email, but if a return call would have been made, he could have explained to you there was an updated MOU. And we could have had concerns discussed with the city council. And quite frankly, we could have addressed Councilman, Councilwoman McCollum's issues. And so we wouldn't be here tonight to have to clean this up and ask that you put the trust in the commissioners' court for us to work to make it better moving forward. We could be at yes, just like every other city in the county. We didn't experience this in any other city in the county.
Did you attend any of those meetings when they voted on?
Jed did. And some, and some of the mayors and city managers told us that we got it. They put on their consent and they passed it.
I, I would say that, um, and this is an internal issue for y'all to deal with. And, um, I, we were able to work with all the other cities and have very productive conversation. A lot of the cities, um, we're, we're grateful for that dialogue. And then we built a lot of trust and a lot of confidence as we were very open and transparent and had that most productive conversation. So unfortunately, it didn't happen in this case. We'll continue to work hard. We'll work directly with y'all if that, that's the, the most effective way to get you the, the information that you need. Because we're just trying to do the best for our, for our citizens, for your citizens. Unfortunately, in this situation, there was a breakdown, where there wasn't a breakdown with any of the other cities.
We had a great relationship with Mayor Hawke. And now with Mayor Bell at the helm and our discussions we have, we look forward to a friendship and great relationships with him directly.
Absolutely.
And that's how we will be moving forward, um, as far as like the county judge's office is concerned.
Mr. Jackson?
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I sure do. Mayor Proten?
I move that we accept the MOU, the revised MOU, the latest version of the MOU, which includes the one medical doctor as a, as a board member. I want to make that clear for the record, as well as reference the other conversations that have occurred as well with regard to membership.
Is that second?
My second.
Any discussion?
I, I, yes, discussion. I still have my own, my feelings of discomfort. I understand, you know, the timeline of events. And I will say, you know, Juisty and Holmes, just get ready for our weekly phone calls. Are you ready? You ready for our standing weekly phone call date? Because I do, you know, I, I don't want anyone in this county, in, in our city to think that the city council is putting health district services in jeopardy. And I do want us to move forward. Like I said, I have zero interest in us not being a part of the health district. So just want to make that clear, and I will vote in favor. But I have a lot of reservations. I have a lot of nerves about that. And I will continue to bring them up, and I, probably a lot, so.
I'll be there with you.
Okay, great.
I initially felt the same way you did, but speaking with them, I feel a lot more comfortable that they're going to do the right thing and with the sub, sub boards that they have, everyone's going to be taken care of.
Well, and I'll, and I'll reiterate, it, I also am comforted by you guys coming here tonight and the commissioners being here personally and speaking. And you're right, you know, we, you are elected just like we are and absolutely hold you accountable. It's everything about the future and what we can't see right now, you know, which is what gives me any trepidation, not about the current state of affairs. But have a little faith and let's move forward.
Um, Mr. Webb?
Yes, Mayor.
If we had asked you to come to our June 1st meeting, would you have attended?
With pleasure.
Mr. Drummond, would you have attended? Mr. Holmes, would you have attended? Mr. Juisty, would you have attended? Okay. So here's the deal. We are where we are, uh, and we've been placed in a difficult position, gang. But I believe that the makeup of our city, certainly the socioeconomic, uh, uh, data suggests that we are older, uh, certainly we're poorer than many of the cities in our county. Uh, and many of our citizenry rely on the health district. Uh, and I believe, I, I've been knowing Commissioner Holmes for years. I believe, uh, him to be a good man and an effective elected official, Mr. Juisty. I've heard great things about your service to our county. And certainly, uh, in meeting Mr. Drummond and Mr. Webb, I have full confidence that they will keep the best interests of our community at heart. Judge Henry guaranteed me that he would. And so I am, uh, I feel like we're in a bad spot, Casey, I really do. But it could have been prevented, uh, and we know that, but, but we don't cry out for spilled milk, we just clean it up. Uh, and so I am inclined to move forward with this agreement tonight. Uh, and if there's nothing further than I think we ought to vote. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Sure, passes unanimously. All right, we are on item five. That means we get to go home. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Passing the city clerk.
I'm sorry. You need a clean copy?
Yeah, I mean, you're saying to turn the like, send it to you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn in a second? There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.